Wanting to progress.
You know.
Do you have the password?
For the wifi?
Yeah.
San Bruno, one, two, three, four, capital S, capital E. That's it?
Yeah. And I think it's a capital S, capital B. Then one, two, and four.
Didn't that normally look like that? So. Uh, I mean, you guys could be looking.
Yes. Can happen soon. Yeah.
Chris, family, and then I. Were you?
Yeah, I got it lined up. So once he headwizes into it, I'll do the screenshot.
Okay.
It might take like a few seconds.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Cause I can't. Yeah, I usually. Yeah.
No, I am using. Actually. Michael. Nate had the panelist.
No, no, I just. Yeah.
Okay.
And I told him we were just having a waiting room and.
Okay.
We'll promote it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the planning commission. We are here with our second person after COVID. Also have Zoom meetings that are as well as my script in front of me tonight, but. People on the Zoom line, if you'd like to be recognized, speak at the time. Request speakers, you can use the tools on the Zoom. A telephone, you can press star nine if you're in attendance here today. Log on and. So. Let's do a roll call first.
Chair, Chair Madden.
Present.
Vice Chair Durazo. Commissioner Leighton.
Yeah.
Commissioner BSOT.
Sure.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Coon.
Here.
Five, two, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Leighton.
By. I pledge allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under. Indivisible, undeniably, and that is so. Thank you. Okay, next, on the extended, we have the people minutes from February twenty first meeting. Is anyone out of you visions they'd like to? Great, this stage of vote.
Chair Madden. Vice Chair Durazo. Commissioner Leighton.
Hi.
Commissioner BSOT.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Coon.
Hi.
Five, two, motion pass.
Very, very, very. Just for correction, I believe is the. Correct me, sorry. You didn't want. Okay, next on the agenda, you have other comments that are not on the agenda. Does anyone with attendance or want to zoom any comments? Right, not on the agenda, let's see.
There are no hands based on.
Don't see any here in the room. So it was. So item six is announcements that come with the interest. Do you have any topics of interest on the mission? That's not what I counted there. But we will move forward to item seven, which is about hearing. Item A, which is a request of additional use permit to allow private community facility. I'm sorry, it's so long. There it is. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. Okay, sorry. Yeah, no reason to differ. So. I have set up here, nothing listed. So. Is this item A, which is three hundred Piedmont Avenue, former Crestmore High School. Secret notice preparation and be environmental guide important. And you have a presentation.
Good evening, the sheriffs, Michael Smith, my department staff. It's nice to meet you back for you again. It's been a while. I'm here to present tonight on the scoping meeting, the notice of preparation for the three hundred Piedmont Avenue, which is former Crestmore High School. All right. So before we get started tonight, I just wanted to introduce a few people who were participating in this project throughout the process. First one being Nick Hamilton. He's joining us virtually here tonight. He is the project planner, previously working on this project. Also with us tonight are the EIR consultant, Christine Black with ICS. And then also the applicant for the project, Langue, is also here in our audience. So the purpose of our meeting tonight is to provide information on the EIR for this project. Receive input on the scope of the EIR, the topics to be analyzed in the EIR, alternatives to be analyzed in the EIR. Feasible mitigation measures, environmental issues affecting the project site. And then we'll have separate hearings later on in the process, not tonight, but separate hearings later on in the process will be held and discuss the merits of the project. So again, this is only on the environmental scopes. The format of tonight's meeting will first have a presentation and then after the presentation, we'll open it up for comment on both the commissioners and the public. So we'll start tonight's presentation with an overview of the project, which is the subject of the EIR and the scoping meeting. So again, the address is three hundred Piedmont Avenue. This is the former Crestmore High School site. The owner is San Antonio Union High School District. And Summer Hill is the developer looking to develop the site and they're currently in a purchasing contract for the property. This, the land use for this property, the general pan land use is low density residential, so the entire site is own or as a low density residential zoning designation. And then the zoning is our for the entire site. Anticipated planning approvals that will be needed for this project include a general plan amendment, a best intended map, planned unit permit, and architectural review permit. So existing general plan policies call for preservation of fields on this site as as part of the redevelopment of the site. And though there are disagreements between the school district and the city about those policies, the city entered into a settlement agreement with this school district to resolve this dispute. As far as that agreement, the city will receive approximately six point four acres of rough graded area that the city can use for playing fields and other recreation space and facilities and approximately twelve point two acres of sloped land and shall be provided as that is publicly accessible open space. So in exchange, the city commits to processing the proposed project with the city initiated general plan amendment to modify existing policies. You clearly note that the proposed dedication fills the general land open space policy. And the city council started this process back in on December thirteenth last year, and that is to initiate the general plan amendment. The design of the the fields themselves is being managed by the community services department and supported by calendar and associates as landscape architects. So here are a few images of the site and to give you a sense of some of the open space that you can see there. It also gives you a sense of some of some of the top topography that we'll be dealing with that we redevelop the site. And you can see the one image that there are existing buildings still present on the site, and those will be removed as part of the project. So again, the project is to construct six point four acres of multi-use fields and parking areas. And those are shown in orange, and that again, that's the city side of the project. And then there's the residential development, which would be the rest of the site, which consists of a hundred and fifty five two-story single-family homes. Fifteen percent of which, at minimum of fifteen percent of which would be affordable onsite for. And also part of the project, this site, more of a field site portion of the site will be created, upgraded for the city to develop. So here's the site point N of the development, showing the homes themselves and who's up with the layout. So the homes are clustered to minimize grading and preserve as much open space on the site as possible. Again, there's approximately six point four acres of open space to be dedicated for playing fields and parking and related improvements. And that's again shown in the orange at the top of the image. And approximately twenty point seven acres of total open space will be preserved on the site. Including again, the twelve point two acres to be owned and maintained by the future HOA, which will be also be publicly accessible. And you can see some of that green there. So there's a lot of open space that is being preserved as part of this project. Blue about the fields in particular, the Crestmore fields are currently used and maintained by youth soccer clubs. And from late eighties until about twenty twenty, were used by the soccer club to maintain by the city. Ensuring that community recreation continues to occur at the site after redevelopment has been a focal point for the city of this process. In order to facilitate this design process, the city entered into a contract again with Colander Associates Landscape Architects to facilitate community engagement process and build consensus for a preferred master plan and prepare plans and supporting documents to lead a proposed multi-use field facility improvements at the former Crestmore Crestmore High School site. The community engagement efforts to date have included meetings with some of the soccer folks and developers and stakeholders. They had a community pop-up event at the spring egg hunt in April of this of this month, this early this month. And they also had an open, an open house event earlier this month in April. At the senior center where we are right now. Calendar associates also did an online survey for the public. Additionally, the process includes two meetings with the Parks and Rec Commission and two city council meetings, including first meeting to obtain initial direction on the direction of the project. So this is some preliminary designs for for the homes and you can see some of the the open space that will be within the development itself. And we talked about a hundred and fifty five homes of varying of varying styles. Very, very nice college. And again, this will come back before the commission when it's ready to go through that review process. Again, just a closer look at some of the homes. Few of the designs that we each home has at least three bedrooms. When they range, start off with around nineteen meters square. Each one has two car garage. So this is the timeline and schedule for the EIR portion that's going to be associated with this. So we are doing an environmental impact report. That's what the EIR is. It is being prepared again by ICF. With the city of San Bruno as the lead agency. The EIR will analyze the potential environmental effects of the proposed residential homes, related infrastructure, the public park, the playing fields, and the publicly accessible open space. The purpose of tonight's meeting is solely focused on the contents of the EIR. Comments made about aspects of the project will be noted, but will not be discussed or addressed at tonight's meeting. Furthermore, no action regarding the project will occur at tonight's meeting. Again, this is the intended of schedule for the EIR, which would have us culminating in spring of next year of twenty twenty four. So notices for tonight's meeting were sent out to owners and occupants of the property within a thousand foot radius of the subject property. And staff that received one email response to the mail from a resident on Madison, who was concerned about the number of recent power outages in the neighborhood and wanted to ensure that the EIR will include utilities analysis. And the answer to that question is yes, the EIR will put in a house of wet and dry utilities. And we notify all utility providers of the project giving and the upgrades. Upgrades may be required, if warranted by the analysis. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Christine Black, and she will discuss in detail the the NOP and the EIR process. Welcome back again.
Very good evening. Sure, nice to be here and joined also by my colleague Kate Thompson from ICF, and I will be serving as the project manager for the EIR. And Kate will be the deputy project manager. So go here to hear your comments tonight and from the public. What I'll be providing an overview of is sort of the final purpose of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. What the review process entails, a little bit more on the purpose of the scoping meeting tonight. And the content that we anticipate in the environmental impact report or EIR. And the next steps and opportunities for input were from you and the public. And then at the end of that, I will leave you with any questions and then opening up the comment period. So SEQA has a few sort of central purposes, and one is an informational document. And that informational document informs both you, the decision makers, and also the public of what the environmental effects of the project will be. And also discusses what mitigation measures might be necessary to reduce those impacts to less than significant. And this also, this process provides an avenue for public participation and that starts tonight, so the meeting. As Michael said, the notice of preparation was sent out to many residents and also to agencies that might be interested in the project or its impacts. And it contains a brief project description, a description and a map of where the project is, as well as description of probable environmental effects that help the commenters think through what they might be interested in seeing in the EIR or any other information that they might have to share. And that mailing of the notice of preparation began a thirty day comment period for the public and for agencies. And that started on the tenth, and it will go through May eleventh. So we have received one comment. A lot of them will come in over that that comment review or NOP review period. So sure, the environmental review process for an EIR starts with the notice of preparation and scoping and with this scoping meeting. And starts signify other times when comments can be made by the public. The draft EIR, which is anticipated later this year, also will have a public comment meeting for agencies and individuals to comment on the content of the EIR, the analysis, mitigation measures, the alternatives. And the final EIR will need to respond to environmental comments in writing, so that that's also part of the record. And then at the very end of the process, there's a vote to certify the EIR as being done by SEQA. And that is separate from the decision whether or not to approve the project and the various entitlements that are being requested here. So the purpose of this scoping meeting truly is to hear comments. We are in the midst of preparing the environmental impact report. So we don't have firm answers on the impacts now, but we want to make sure that the draft EIR will answer the questions and comments that people have on the environmental impacts of the project. So this is the time to say what the public and what you would like to see analyzed in the draft EIR. And as Mike said, that this scoping meeting is not, is the time to answer questions about what will the impacts be to biological resources. Right now, we really want to hear about the scope of the EIR. And the EIR, as I said, the NOP listed probable environmental impacts. And there are a number of resource areas, those are all on the slide that we anticipate will be analyzing in the environmental impact report. That ranges from more human environment topics like noise, air quality emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, and utilities, transportation and recreation to more natural environment topics like biological resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, and also wildfire. So this is a pretty broad range of topics in terms of what SEQA covers. This covers all of the resource topics except for two, that's agriculture and forestry resources, because there's just a lot agriculture, forestry resources on site. And also mineral resources. So same same reason there, there's no mineral resources on site. But otherwise, the EIR is going to cover this wide array. And the EIR will also take a look at project alternatives. Those alternatives will need to fit within the framework of SEQA. So they'll need to meet most of the basic project objectives. It'll need to reduce a significant impact of the proposed project and be feasible. So as we develop the EIR and identifying significant impacts, we'll also be identifying what's called a reasonable range of alternatives to the project that the decision makers can consider in the public comment on. And the EIR also will be evaluating a new project alternative, which is what would happen if the project was not allowed to go forward. And the EIR also identifies what's called under SEQA, the environmentally secure alternative. And just to be clear, the EIR isn't making recommendations on these alternatives. It's merely saying this is the environmentally secure alternative based on these factors, but it's not making a recommendation. And that concludes the spoken one in the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Christine. So. Looks like the opportunity to submit oral comments is now, as we said, we've already seen one email. You can also submit comments in written format between now and May eleventh out of the USP as the project planner. And for additional information regarding the project or submit a written in for our comments, there's my information on the screen right now. That's where the public, if they want to send their comments, they can send to me. Again, they can mail them or they can email to me. Now, that is the end of our presentation tonight. I guess the main takeaway here is that even if we don't receive comments from you tonight on slide nineteen, I would be saw a list of things that will be covered. So I mean, if nothing is said here, there's going to be a lot of analysis done for the project. And so this concludes my presentation of learning.
I want to have one question. I heard of a lot of the things that are going to be evaluated during the process. One of them is wildfire evaluation. And from the other projects that the 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 EIR process, I don't want to bother with the wildfire section. So this is new to me. Sure. So wildfire, for SEQA, is pretty new. So wildfire, for SEQA, is a pretty new topic. And what the wildfire analysis really focuses on is whether the project exacerbates existing conditions. Because it's all about impacts of the project on the environment, less so the impacts of the environment on the project. So we'd be looking at whether the homes being there would increase wildfire risk or a lot of times construction, they'll also create a vicious site with resources into the area. So it's really about what project activities and what hillside activities might exacerbate wildfire conditions. And I know there's vegetation management plan. Part of the project for some of the urban space areas, so.
Directly calling on that, I noted, since the vegetation has been, I noticed that the the area that was marked orange that was being turned over to the city seemed to have, there was like the playing fields. the area that was brown and orange that was being turned over to the city seemed to have, there was like a playing field. And there was that very narrow strip. And I was unsure whether the city is taking on responsibility for doing, and is this sort of turning into something similar to a median where we manage the trees, bushes, whatever is on it?
So sorry. The question is whether the city would be responsible for maintaining that or strictly land outside of the
There would be aesthetic aspects, but there also would be fire management, fire risk. I wasn't very, it sort of seemed like it was a strict land that was so narrow that it didn't it it seemed like it probably didn't have much public use as like a space to recreate or whatever, that it's mostly decorative, but perhaps I'm wrong.
Yeah, the the planning will also necessarily programming that space that does butt up against how how to enter property. And so there's really not much use for it. The city would be dedicated to the city and it would be responsible.
Right. Yeah, it does. Like, it's obviously important that we not end up with undergrowth there that's highly manageable. So that's going to end up as a, as something that's coming in for the budget. So actually, we actually want that land and we want to on the how trans, like, we created it in there, whatever, but because I I basically I noticed
Can you go back to the slide presentation?
Yeah. The east side, yeah, it's yeah, well, yeah, part of the park is adjacent to the person. Then there's a flat portion at the bottom, which would be, which would be a overloaded park. So yes, that's a part of what the city would would be given. It would be either just a landscape strip or basically passive recreation. And again, it's also a big part, studied as part of what calendars do now.
Just thought of that, it currently that straight experience of parking. Even the park that we have to pass, there are occurrence, right? Is that, I don't want to get in the meat here, it's not the proper meat for that, but is the the thought that that will continue to be that kind of like partial park in this lawn area or artificial turf for that breaking field?
Yeah, so that is part of the calendar scope at this point. We preliminary plans do involve some level of parking there, but it is still under development.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's true. Okay, so, and I think we'll have a chance to go. But just a quick clarification then, are, is the E I R looking at the future park and Summer Hill Development as two separate studies? Are you going to two separate I Rs or is that?
That's a good question. It's one I R with both projects in it. And I don't know the details about the agreements with the development of the land, but there are essentially kind of connected actions where with the development of the residential, there's also the open space development. So even though the components are different, Summer Hill is proposing the residential development and the city is the sponsor for the parks that are connected projects that are being treated in one I R. But we will use things like headings and all that to show here's the impacts of the residential and here's the
Last question.
Okay, there's any more to the commission? So now is time for Yeah, so we have three speaker cards that were submitted. And at the moment, I don't see any hands raised in Zoom, but that might change. But the first speaker will be Rich. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to, I'm a resident of San Bruno for over thirty five years. And my children started thirty years ago playing soccer here. So it's great. I know that there's going to be someone that contacts at some time. So I just want to make sure the planning permission practice is in. There's this thing about this they have to have treatment of the waste there. And I don't, it's your concern. The concern is the amount of footprints. If you look at the original footprint we had, they're squeezing us down to a certain space. I just wanted to make sure they understands that we're definitely going to need some type of turf field there because of the loss of the space that we have. Yeah, over a thousand kids that play there in the fall, the minimum programs we have here in San Francisco, San Bruno. So I just want to make sure that's considered in the designs. I'm on this small community that's been meeting our technical firm that the city has hired and can talk to the people from the city about some of the concerns that we raised in there. And I just want to thank you for your time. And I think it's great for our community that we're going to add something here, we can sell some homes, have some money here, but there are some concerns that the people up there, about traffic and stuff, they're going to maintain the fields for basically our center of community at no cost. So thanks for your time tonight. And I just want to make know that we are anxiously waiting for this to happen. But it's been a long time coming, but there's no big hurry right now. So take your time to review everything. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right. The second speaker is Michael. He has three minutes to speak.
My main question is, where's driving going to? I live in Rosewood Drive, right next to where it's going to be. And he hit that, he owns the homes. And has a two hundred cars. Is that, I didn't see the first address. It's my main concern. Also, the, there was, Zoomy was not enclosed on similar website for us to go that way.
All right. And the third speaker here with us today is Pamela.
Hi, capital M on Rosewood Brown. I have a few questions, and maybe this isn't the main board yet, but you're talking about affordable housing. I can't think of single one of those homes being under a million dollars. So beautiful. So what you consider affordable? I thought it was for like maybe less income. These, is there an association? Are they having their own association that do something like that? They have an association they would have to go off to it. I saw a pretty park and playgrounds. It was it on a smaller scale like they did where we have the big fire or is it a bigger playground and they open to the whole city? Is it open to only that community? I understand the fields for soccer and all that will be open, but it looks like a pretty elaborate playground that most of us don't have in our neighborhood. And is there going to be a picnic area there? There's not open space, but no one has a picnic table, picnic bean. Is it supposed to be a go to or is it only a go to for that community? Also, the bigger thing is the traffic. My go to street is gentlemen. And gentlemen from Rosewood goes straight down to El Camino. Where is this traffic going to go? So I'm going to, I think that street is Piedmont. So I'm going to go down Piedmont or go off the top and come down Madison. And where they're going to go, they're going to go on gentlemen, or they're going to go to San Bruno Avenue. So I'm really, really worried about the known traffic that'll be there. Because I think there's going to be a lover team. But thank you.
Right. Looking through Zoom, we have no hands raised.
Very good.
The, 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 the site that's going to be dedicated to the city will be turned over and graded. So the city would be responsible for moving that. And so that's why they work with calendar associates with a design for that, so that it is, right, I mean, if we're going to lose the playground in the Yes, okay, that's all. This should be decided. Also, I'm so what the mission design said. There is going to be downtime for the parks. Is that studying as part of the I R? Yes, okay, that's all. This should be decided. So actually, what the mission design said. There is going to be downtime for the parks. Is that studying as part of the I R?
So C I W A for Recreation Impact does look at whether the project is going to increase degradation of other recreational resources. And a lot of clients have linked to closure of other recreational resource. So we will look at the timing of the construction and then use it and see what that. So in that sense, oh, this is more invisible impacts to the environment, but also not so social. But C I W A will have a creation in that.
Okay, and and since there is a loss of certain part land that's not used for are, are we working with calendar tandem to the E I R to make sure that their plans get incorporated into your studies?
Oh, yeah.
And you know, when everything's happening in tandem, so that when they're ready to go, we have minimal impacts.
Yeah, the city staff is working directly with them, but we aren't seeing the designs that are happening as well, so that we could agree those yeah, are then how they will.
Does that include anything that might be needed to to improve this area and as well as other programs? Is that going to incorporate?
Do you mean into the I R?
Or, well, it so to say that we're going to improve this, you know, this part, and then potentially you might have to have improvements at hard side or other areas. It's, it's going to be so this does that understanding of the economic portion get incorporated into your study?
So just speaking broadly about what C I W A allows for mitigation, there, there is a kind of mitigation compensation. But first, we have to identify some certain significant impact that could be addressed by some sort of lending source. So if we do find that there's an impact, we'll look at the patient, that there's other kinds of things too, like construction scheduling and things like that. It's a little premature at this point, but that sometimes can be appropriate. Is that, is that
Yeah, and that's why
Yeah.
And, and then the same thing with the infrastructure, that actually first question, right? The underground facilities, is that going to be managed by the city or is that it, it, the roads as well? It's all the infrastructure?
Yeah, right. So, so the, the streets for the subdivision are will be private. The, tentatively, the roadway between Piedmont and Clear is the other, the other street around like Portland will be public. And the developers will be putting in all of the utilities and the required stormwater treatment. There is a large stormwater treatment area at the end of the, of the area that will be dedicated to the city. I know that would be maintained by the H I.
Okay, yeah, great. That was awesome. So in that portion, we do maintain. Okay, sorry. And all right. Under population and housing. I understand that you'll, you'll look at it to make sure that increased population does not impact. Not having negative impact. This, this is sort of funny to think, but on the contrary, especially a lot in my setting, housing element and certain goals. Because the contrary was not enough. Population increase also have an impact in, in some weird way. Is that study? Or how do you study?
Yes, so population and housing under C I W A, we look at whether the project would induce sort of an unplanned growth. And because this is in an area that was in for housing, we will look at whether it's considered in the housing element and whether this helps lead it. C I W A is concerned more about unplanned growth. So that it's a bit narrower, more narrow of a lens than the policy issue of radio trade.
I understand, but you did on the main thing is you will look at it and whether the housing stormwater. I'm thinking as, as, as a stormwater study, it looks at permeable land versus imperious then. Do you, do you take the roads into effect? Or is that just a a lot?
It's the entire project site. So we'll look at the net change. And we do have Cottenshires as a geotechnical consultant. And we're looking at the drainage, sand or cement for the shield.
Okay, I think that's you
All right. Listen, the, 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 that are common, there's still are in relation to the traffic concern. My understanding of this is that or C I W A, the main concern around traffic would just be impacts on the V T, whether it's vehicle miles traveled to go up or down, whereas traffic flow would not as part of the C I W A analysis, as part of the city's you know, use permitting and all of that. But basically, correct.
I think that is a good distinction between what is part of the city's review and what part of C I W A review. The other thing that we're looking at that does relate to more traffic is safety, because I know that's a concern. So will this for example, bring a person that creates safety problems. So we are taking a pretty problem. We have fair peers on board doing all the traffic studies.
Well, and the whole traffic engineering study would be looking at like, you know, the people that move here, like they reduce their, you know, their commuting in for these days.
Yeah, we'll look at the B M T compared to the average of these in the state guidelines to evaluate.
Yeah. And then affordable housing would probably not be C I W A law is really much better. But I'm sure is this under inclusionary zoning, there's A. B is in loop and these into our, you know, outside of, well, that's all their parts of this.
And that, that is the right, that is also the scene scope, but the project would be required under our ordinance to require to provide required fifteen percent, and that would be provided on site.
Make sure that, you know, folks have commented on those issues.
I started.
And commissioner, I'm just, that's all the, the traffic questions I got. So it sounds like from an environmental perspective, we'll be studying the traffic to a certain degree, but not with the kind of specifics either we'll be doing during the city's process. Yeah, there, the city's process is looking at things in the I R. So V M T is replacing level of service, which is what has been used for decades before. So E I Rs are no longer so concerned about congestion. But there is a traffic study being done. So you'll hear a lot about transportation.
Any last submission? Okay, one question I had, I had this statement, our, it's appropriate question, but the field that would be glad to keep this deal, like the first speaker said, um my, all through my daughters played in the, I coached somebody before we, or hold it separate, and we came separate of specifically being this league. And I know a lot of internet members really value it. So I'm glad we're keeping the field, the track field. Does that be lit, that lighting? Where games in there be, you know, these traffic concerns expressed? Is that part C I W A or is that part of the development that
Yeah, so there, there are lighting plans being developed. We will be looking at night time lighting as an impact and talk about safety as it relates to use of the area. as it relates to the area or. So that is.
Okay, it's, yeah, I know like the soccer field in the city, yeah, or lit or sourced funding to the city area. It was leagues, like, one point field until, you know, whenever you buy a lot of dining, is there, you know, they have stadium type light. So I'm not sure. That's what I was referring, you know, stadium type lighting. And then also, again, I don't know, part of the EIR, part of, for those games when they do occur for the AWA. So and then, you know, things that happen. We're obviously finding out quite a bit of that part of the park, because although the heat would, you know, probably about thirty percent of the people occurring. But he's a great project. Just, and I think my question's important now.
And I can, I guess I can share, calendar is working on the design still with lighting and the party.
Okay, any other, just keep in mind that, yeah, it's why not keep appropriate engagement. Hopefully, the field that remains has an actual proper restroom. Not say that that thing is the space. That's all that. So, question. Just a question for the part. It sounds like this is just pure presentation. Last call for Commissioner. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll go on to item number nine, which is items. It seems like we'll need some volunteers to be there soon.
I guess I will say, I don't believe we have any hands for the next eight hours. Okay, in the event we do, it just have, you've indicated, you have. Yeah, I have a running conflict on Thursday. See any others? I can, on the last two, I am right nationally available. Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, it's likely that it's. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, I have ten comments from members. Do you have any comments? All right, we should be something. Okay. If we have no other comments, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming and participating.